Well, you do like I do, you walk out front first.
That's what I just did. One time I was over here.
Teresa?
Hey Jim. Jim, you're getting moved on Father Day as time goes along.
It took him long enough to get up. He was faithful. Now you're trying to slip him down the other end.
Seven years ago, I started out here.
Well, then, did that mean you didn't get promoted?
I didn't get promoted.
Hi, how are you? Happy New Year.
How are you doing?
Nice to see ya.
Y'all have a good Christmas and all?
Me too.
I know.
That's good.
Ah, yes. I don't have to switch today.
Yeah, me too. Sometimes I come in there real low and, you know.
I got a six and an eight, yeah.
No, I'm in the back.
Oh, the back, yeah.
I like the back up as much.
Mine, my little girl, my middle boy, she just turned six and she screams. You know, anything, I mean, you know, something funny, ah!
Oh, yeah, well, I told him I've got.
But you know, when I was, when I grew up, I used a small paddle, I used something like that.
I'll come up to them, they're blue, just like that. Probably is taller than them.
Well.
Probably.
Well, that's what I keep telling my son, I said, discipline him. Oh, yes, we do, I said, what do you do? You tell him, okay, y'all can't watch TV, go in your bed. We got TVs in the bedroom, I mean, it doesn't do no good. Time out, you know, I don't.
It's just, it's different, and I know my daughter wants to.
Yeah.
I just told Bob, I said, when I move Pennsylvania, it's because I'm gonna die. I'm on my last leg, and it's gonna take care of me.
We all from Pennsylvania?
No.
She married a Marine. I've been here forty years. She married a Marine and moved up there. He got her, he didn't retire. He'll never be here.
I don't either, because they keep changing.
Well, I went, I drove.
I know wrestling officials. White pinstripe shirt. Then they move just to.
Oh, it's in Pennsylvania. Okay, I know where that's at.
A white pinstripe shirt.
Yeah.
I got a whole bunch of, I got it, I got it, because it's taken off one closet one.
And I was gonna come home on a Monday.
So, I could use that, my. So, I gotta get rid of that.
You might get up with one of the booking agents.
Yeah, I thought maybe.
Don Carr. Don, give Don a call.
Everett belonged to you, River.
Yeah, he might know some young fisher that, something like that.
I didn't drive straight through, I'm too old for that.
There's a lot of softball guys going over to volleyball.
Right, Everett did softball and volleyball.
And, uh.
He, he did softball, volleyball. He didn't do, um.
I, I didn't see any literature or anything out there, they usually have a stand with something on it. Ask them, Pam, over there. The one.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, honey.
New Year. I've been through warrants in quite a bit.
Happy New Year.
How, how you do, sir?
Hey!
Oh, she's here.
We can start. We're all here, right?
Is Chuck? Is, is, what happened to Chuck Quinn? Is he?
What's going on, Matt?
I knew it, sir. Do what?
Sure, thank you.
Tennessee, how are you?
How you doing?
Somebody else. I'm gonna have to go by my church.
I'll do the. I know it.
Yeah, that's the only one I know.
It was written down somewhere.
I said I would. We had our first meeting televised at the water. You could hear it. And we have a lot of cross talking and.
Oh, yeah.
Of course, we have, we eat it.
Wait, yeah?
And they had to take all the food from that in hallways, and you could see that. We had good sandwiches, we had pizza, sandwiches like that, and that's. We've been doing that for about six, seven years, I guess.
Yep.
We, we've got some people that have other meetings, like at seven o'clock, and they, and we start at five. And be there at five, and then, you know, we don't, they don't get a chance to eat or anything, so.
They're, they're in our conference, but.
They decide that long.
Say our, when we retire, but they have some things where they wrestle at.
Because I never see anything in the paper about.
See, there's a.
For some reason, they don't call them as much, but whenever they come to Dixon and they do their conference, they have something on the paper.
Keys, how are you doing?
Oh, just peachy.
It's odd, because you know, Chris covers Carteret County pretty well. Just talking about here.
Both hands. I'm good at Christmas, as long as nobody comes to my.
Maybe they just figure it out.
They are, you know, but they live in Old.
They come to my house, I can't ever get rid of. Yeah, I was in bed like at thirty Christmas Eve, I said.
There's some people there.
I set my clock to wake up a few minutes before, so I watched the ball.
Do you want to get set your clock? You don't stay up?
No, I didn't, I just, I was tired and I just don't. Ever since my wife passed away, of course, I don't, I don't do anything much, I don't anymore.
Finally gotten as tall as.
Okay.
George Hillbrand.
I was going down by here today and I didn't do it.
You know that.
Exactly this was.
Yeah, I'm.
I can't quite place it on the map.
That's their loss.
The river looks funny.
Yeah.
See them all the time.
Well, I took everybody out.
Hey, happy New Year. Same to you.
Maybe when you put it on. Big map.
Take it, this is the river itself here, so this is gonna, gonna have a coastline, then.
So, they, they join, they pay their own.
What I really need to do is get Lawrence's view.
Yeah, I don't know.
And you know where all these things are. She, she was looking at pears and she was looking at love.
No.
That's a part that's.
Okay.
Where's the land that's across?
Downtown Jacksonville. I haven't seen.
I'd like to call to order the Jacksonville Planning Advisory Board meeting for January the fourteenth. We will stand and be led by the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Sandra Wirek, followed by the invocation by Mr. Danny Williams.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Heavenly Father for this day, Lord, thank you for the privilege that we can worship each day of our lives. Lord, we thank you for the city, Lord, and for the leaders, and Lord, we thank you that they still seek guidance, Lord, in doing the things that you would have us to do. We ask you to be with us in this meeting, that we not say anything or do anything, that we not be pleasing to you, of course, in Jesus's name we pray.
Amen.
Well, welcome to the meeting tonight, and glad to see everybody, we're starting off a brand new year and excited, and hopefully everybody had the good holidays with Christmas and holidays and New Years, and so I'm just glad to see everybody here on the board, and I'm glad to be back, and so hopefully we've got some neat things ahead of us for the city of Jacksonville, so we'll go ahead and proceed on, I need the approval for tonight's agenda.
Salute.
Second.
Motion of Mr. Spring, second by Ms. Wirek, those in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you. Review and approval of the minutes from last month's reger meeting, December the tenth, two thousand twelve, any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Wirek. And a second by Ms. Moore, those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Thank you very much. City Council update, we have Councilman Bob Warden with us tonight, good to see you.
We preferred that the first plan unit development until our February fifth meeting, for the, really the same two concerns that y'all had, one was the street width, and the other, more important, was the second entrance, and it's our understanding that they're working on formalizing an agreement where they get a second entrance into that development directly to Western Boulevard, so that will make all of us feel a little better, I think, from a, from a safety standpoint. On our January eighth meeting, we did approve the following text amendments, the sign regulations, you recall, that was the, the shopping center signs, how we, how many square foot we allocated and so forth, we approved that, the bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and that was the sidewalk, formalizing our sidewalks again, and then review procedures for major subdivisions in the city of Jacksonville subdivision ordinance, so that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you, Bob, appreciate that. Excuse me, I see there is no old business, we will move on to the new business, and this is a map amendment, a rezoning request from RM five to P D R Georgetown Landing, and I believe Ms. Abigail has the.
Your question, Mr. Chairman, before we get started, I would remind the planning board that the adoption procedures for public comment, all speakers shall be followed, shall follow the following guidelines. The chairman may allow a period of public comment after staff's presentation, once Abigail finishes up here, the speakers must be acknowledged by the chairman, speakers must come to the podium, we'd ask that you go to the left podium as you're facing the board, and provide your name and address for the record. The speakers will have a maximum of three minutes to speak unless the planning board entertains a successful majority vote to extend the time limit, and if you do that, you need to provide that for everybody. No time can one speaker yield their time to another speaker, in that we ask that if there's more than one person that basically wants to echo the sentiments already expressed, that they just come up and do so, basically that I agree with the person that presented before me, without necessarily going back over the same points. Please be courteous in your presentation and your language, personal attacks will not be tolerated, and once the comment period is closed, no additional comments will be allowed, so I'd just like to remind the board and those in the audience, in case any of you have any desire to speak, and the chairman opens the floor for that, thanks, Gail.
Thank you, Ryan.
You mean planning board, we have before you the second pud or plan development, and this one is Georgetown Landing, it's located in the Georgetown neighborhood at Ellison Hatchell and Blue Claw Bay avenues. This is an aerial of the site. This site currently has a future land use of medium density residential as donated, as designated by the CAMA land use plan. The current zoning is RM five, and that's pretty much the whole surrounding area is all zoned RM five. The proposal is P D R, which, as we're sort of figuring out this plan development tool, it also comes with terms and conditions and a site master plan that you'll see indicated here. In your staff report on page nine and ten, you'll see there was a list of concerns and sort of corrections and things that we still needed more information from about this site, and you'll also see the updated master plan that reflects what you have here on the side, the one in your packet was not as detailed as this one. John L. Pierce, on behalf of the owner, Thomas Hunter, had worked over the weekend and updated this and sort of addressed a lot of the concerns that you'd see on page nine and ten in your staff report. This is the picture of the property. Across the street, this is the vacant lot across Ellison Hatchell, and then this is looking west towards Ellison Hatchell, this is looking east, you'll see the Blue Claw is the sort of easement area at the end of this road, it's not a paved road currently. With all of these changes and all of the things being addressed, staff is changing the recommendation you see in your staff report from deferment to approval, based on findings of fact A and D, and that it advances the public interest, and the approval will be conditioned upon the updated master plan and terms and conditions that you received tonight, not the ones listed in the staff report. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question. With the, with, with the current zoning RM five, what are, and this area is all RM five, correct, currently now? What is the, according to the acreage, what's the number of units that could be put in this area for RM five?
It's actually apartments are allowed as a special use, so it really would be up to, the number is kind of, there is no number, it would basically be whatever came through, and is that an acceptable density, the way that the RM five zoning district is written? It just says apartments, there's no density specified. Our T C A zoning, the maximum density is sixteen units per acre outright, and twenty-five with a special use permit, so they're saying with a maximum density of approximately fourteen units per acre, it would basically be the standard T C A, a little bit less than the standard T C A.
And the medium density residential versus in the CAMA is defined as up to sixteen units per acre, so they're going fourteen, that's why they're in compliance with the land use designation.
So, I, I just, is my understanding that the intent is to build apartments with attached and detached garages, is that?
Yes, that, and then the area for a marina as well.
Okay.
Yeah, Gail, if you will mark the marina area, which is depicted here with the little square crosshatching, and then everything else would be utilized for the multifamily.
Would be, in houses be built, they're also just apartments?
The only uses that they've identified is multifamily, marina, and a restaurant with the marina. So, the area in blue that Gail just highlighted, that's the area identified on the plan is, that's the area that would contain the marina and the restaurant area, and the remaining portion would be where the multifamily units would be constructed.
Do they have a specific restaurant in mind to go there?
None that we're aware of.
And they're proposing four hundred and sixty-three units in there?
I believe that's. Wasn't this before us, or haven't we dealt with a marina, and it's, it seemed like a few years ago?
It wasn't on this side, it was on the other side.
It was on the river on the other side, yeah.
On the other side, this is, as far as I know, new. This is in the Georgetown.
The canal across the river, if you go back to the aerial. The piece that's undeveloped on the right-hand side of the screen, now go back to the vicinity map, if you can circle the area where Osprey Point is, there was a community docking facility major, now that's Laguna Bay across the river there, with the little canal, no, to the north, right there, right beside Riverwalk Landing, that it was, but it was not a marina, they weren't doing, it was, basically, a slip was gonna be for each individual unit.
Right.
And there was no marina as we define it.
There was concern about pollution and everything like that, okay.
Circle the area where Dr. Shilsky has his development.
That was Laguna Bay where you had it first, yes.
Right there, that's what I thought, okay. And how, show me traffic-wise, how traffic would move out of this. I'm thinking four hundred and sixty-three houses, I'm going like, that's four hundred and sixty-three cars minimum, so that's a lot of traffic going somewhere or coming from somewhere.
Correct, you'd have two farms on seventeen at basically Broadhurst in Georgetown, there is a bottleneck right within this area here, because that's only one way, that's the only street going into Georgetown at that particular location. And then once you come down, there's, there's a couple of different ways that you can turn off, get to the project site.
Once you, once you get down so far, there's only one way down to it, just one street going into this area that they want to develop, is that correct? There's, it comes a point where you're, you're just, everything's going down one street.
Correct.
Okay.
Are they going to have security, or is it going to be private entrance type?
Uh, Tom Pierce, if you want to give some more information about that, there are gates identified on the master plan. Here, and here.
They're wetlands, and now.
Yeah, that's, they're eliminated. In that area.
With, with this map, I guess I'm a little confused, but I know there's one area we're looking at rezoning, tell me what area we're actually dealing with here, because I see all these different property owners out here, all these lots on the outside, so if you can just.
Yeah, here, I'll.
Say everything we're dealing with here.
Little thicker line weight there, too.
If you don't mind. Because I was looking at this in detail, and I see different owners, different owners, are we just talking about the interior of this circle? Helps me to more visualize it. Okay, so it's everything on the inside, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, can I see all this other property owners out here on the outside, okay, so it's everything on the end, okay, okay. Does Blue Claw Bay Road exist?
There's an easement for it in this.
It is right here.
There.
It's sort of just a dirt.
It's a dirt road?
Now, more or less.
So, it's not paved?
No, it's not.
No, it's a right, one of the things is your maps also is a little bit misleading, because it actually goes through the middle of the property, this is, it's larger than what your maps look.
Basically, it's just a dirt road?
Yeah, this is the.
Correct. Or a sandy road or whatever, okay.
Easement dirt road path, it's not currently improved.
So, is there any, along Blue Clay Bay Avenue, which is a dirt road, is there any houses there?
No, the nearest house, let's see.
Okay, so nothing.
Yeah, there's Blue Claw here, there's homes here, and then to the north here, it's cut off on the other side of the property in this area. Yeah, this is, you'll see in the aerial here, this is the blue. And it's not improved currently.
Has the T I A been done?
No, and that's listed as one of the conditions, is that a T I A would be conducted before, and this is also, it will still go through the site plan process, this is just sort of a general bubble master plan of, you know, stormwater will be treated here, the general street layout will be here, this will be apartments, it's not the specific buildings and, you know, things like the fire code and the distance between buildings and where the wetland protection and all of that will work through as it goes through the site planning process and actually for the development. This is just to rezone the property, and because it's not a traditional district like our R seven or a B one, it also comes with the terms and conditions and that master plan, and the reason they went this route as opposed to just developing it as the RM five and possibly going to special use to do the apartments is the marina. The marina would not be, it's a, more of a commercial use, that would not be permitted in the townhome, the T C A district, so to do sort of both of those without subdividing the parcel out and rezoning one portion B one and one portion T C A or going through the special use permit process, it sort of did this general overview plan of the area that incorporates both the commercial marina and the residential apartment use.
It also is very specific, they're telling you exactly what they want to do, they want to do multifamily, a marina, and a restaurant, that's it, versus B one, which would be a laundry list of things, even if they then changed that to conditional use and whittled some of the uses down, they're telling you basically, we want these three uses within this designated area, and that's it, with the other terms and conditions listed. One other thing, remember, we had two puds come in back to back, based on what we've heard, it is our intention, as we move forward, is a traffic impact analysis would be done before, so the next person that comes in and starts talking to us about a pud, our comment's gonna be, you go get a T I A, that's first and foremost. Remember, before, the zoning ordinance has always said we could require with a rezoning, but we always put the T I A off until the development plans came forward, because of the pud and the concerns that have been raised, we're gonna start requiring that we, we're gonna start enforcing that part of the code instead of deferring until later, we're gonna have it done up front as we move forward.
And the reason for that with the general like B one zoning, it's a laundry list of uses, with the pud, it's specific, so you can't really do a T I A if you have a laundry list of uses, because each use has a different chip generation and different traffic requirements, so if you don't know specifically what you're doing the T I A for, it's not very valuable, but with a pud, you pretty much know what's gonna be there, so the, you can determine what you need to do the T I A for.
I have a question. On that Blue Claw Bay Avenue, there are the people that own those lots along there, do they have some kind of a covenant for taking care of that road, and if they do, how would this affect that?
Not that I'm aware of, all the properties within a hundred feet, which would be those properties, have been notified as a courtesy letter of this rezoning, and were invited to both this meeting and then the city council meeting as well. But I'm not aware of any covenants for that area.
More than likely, that's a right-of-way that was plotted on a map a long time ago, and it was just never constructed, but it's still plotted right-of-way.
I have a question. Would the streets leading into this be upgraded with curbs and gutters and everything, or would it be just still like the roads are now?
They would leave them as they are, they would do their improvements on their development tract. Now, if the TIA identifies that turn lanes or something is needed, then, you know, that would come into play. But as far as adding curbing and gutting, gutter along the street, I haven't heard of that being a requirement of a TIA. You do hear turn lanes and deceleration lanes and-
So who's gonna take care of these roads? Who takes care of the roads currently? City?
City.
All of a sudden, we increase the amount of traffic, and these roads start falling apart, because maybe they weren't designed for that traffic load, and so the city's gonna have to pay to fix them up.
And they're not very wide either.
No, it's very narrow.
We maintain the streets.
That's the city's fault, it should be fixed.
Does this sit in the, does this sit in the flight overlay path?
Yes, there's a portion that's in the FPOD.
I'm sorry.
There's a portion that's in the flight path overlay.
So, let me, ma'am?
Okay, yes.
So, we're gonna make this massive construction down here, we're gonna use these existing roads for construction entrance, heavy trucks, equipment, whatever they're gonna build, so whatever damage is done to the existing roads that are back there, that's just tough luck, right?
That's how they are, I mean, the streets have already been accepted by the city, they're ours, people use them every day, and as they wear and tear, eventually the city has to go in and maintain them.
And I, the reason I say that is, it's currently zoned RM five, which means they probably could've done whatever they were gonna do anyway, but I got a feeling that originally all that was zoned RM five because of the existing uses that were there and the restrictions that anything else would've put on those, the uses years ago. Like mobile homes, couldn't that show up on RM five?
Yes, sir.
That may be why originally all this area was zoned RM five, was because there were current residents around there in mobile homes, and they didn't want those people to lose the right to have their home on the land.
That's a possibility, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's our rezon for multifamily residential anyway, so, you know, with duplexes or like that, we're just trying to increase the density use of the land.
Right, single-family, duplex, triplex, quadrplexes are all allowed, as long as you meet the minimum lot size requirements. Apartments require special use permit with no density maximum, so it would be based on the plan that, that was brought before you. So basically, they could eliminate the marina altogether, come in with a special use permit for nothing but multifamily here, and the planning board and city council would still consider it, whether this rezoning goes through or not. They would then, if they wanted to do the marina, have to go through an individual rezoning for just the marina area, to some sort of a commercial-type district with all the uses, unless they went conditional, and then whittled it down. That's basically what they've done here. They've basically given you a conditional use rezoning in a roundabout way that says these three uses in these particular locations, and that's what we're bound by. I think the question, with that in mind, you know, is it an appropriate land use for this PUD to have a marina, a restaurant, and the density that they are seeking? Of, you know, approximately fourteen, so say a maximum of fourteen point nine-nine units per acre. Is that appropriate?
So like someone mentioned about the traffic and the building and the construction and the trucks and everything else that's going in there, and the developer does not have to bear any of this cost? Because if they're, I'm thinking of the increase in traffic?
It, you, your point is, is spot-on, but that happens, I hate to say this, but I mean, that's how it is anywhere. I mean, Williamsburg Plantation, Carolina Forest Boulevard, those streets have already been taken over by the city, as they continue to develop, the dump trucks are gonna go up and down that roadway. I mean, that's no different here than anywhere else, I'm not saying that it's not a concern, but I mean, that's no different anywhere.
Although in some cases, we have had the flexibility to designate that you must have a construction entrance, and in some cases, we've been privileged enough not to have to accept the roads into the city until after the construction or the majority of the construction's done. I think I remember McDaniel Drive was like that, they wanted it to go into the city early on in the game, but we saw there was a lot more construction to be done down there, and we said, wait, we'll just wait till all the construction's over, or most of it, and then we'll take it into the city. This doesn't give us, we don't have much flexibility here, 'cause we can't tell them to, you know, float this construction stuff in.
Good idea.
Don't get me out of it. I mean, you're still gonna have the traffic no matter what, for buildings, so whether it's stayed at RM five or got rezoned, I mean, if someone buys this land, they want to just keep it RM five and go and build it out, they're, they're still gonna bring the construction trucks in anyway, so. Okay, all right, Ms. Moore.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning request from RM five to PDR, subject to the terms and conditions that staff recommends.
So we have a motion by Ms. Moore to accept this rezoning request from RM five to PDR with the conditions that sit forth by the planning department. And finding a fax A through D. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Is there any desire to hear from anyone that may be here?
Yes.
Is there anyone from the, would like to say anything? Yes, ma'am, would you like to come up here? Right here, ma'am. We just need to identify your name and address, and, next one, ma'am, yeah, thank you.
If I, if I look, my name is Delris Brad, I'm at 209 Conover Street, which is at the end of Conover Street. If I look at the layout correctly, the private gate is gonna be right here at the end. And I guess with the amount of people that you're gonna put in here, and like you said, I understand the roads are narrow, and we already have traffic problems coming through there constantly, and I understand that if somebody else comes through and develop, we're gonna still have the same problem. But, I mean, where do we, where do the residents, as far as going in and out of this area with all this extra traffic, and there's only one way in and one way out? If, I think if I'm not mistaken, during flood zones, flood times, hurricanes, we've been evacuated, we've been asked to leave. Where, where is the extra outlet in case there's something that happens along that water line?
Ryan?
It's a good question. I mean, the roads that lead back to the site are not proposed to be changing, it's not under the developer's control, those are all existing right-of-ways. This developer's simply seeking to rezone this portion of the property to develop it, they would still use the same road system that all the residents that are already there currently use. I'm not saying that, that neck down that we pointed out earlier, I mean, that's, it is a neck down, where it bottles down to, a bottleneck to one, one road within that area. But that's how it currently is set up. But I mean, it's a legitimate concern, I mean, you're talking about adding four hundred units, increased traffic, I think, is a given.
I mean, I understand after you get past the Board of Education, you can either go straight to Seventeen, or you can turn down Broadhurst, but still, it's only one way after you get past that point. I was just, you know, concerned.
Great. That's a good question, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Cynthia Watson, 203 Conover Street. We had gone to the city for, in 2004, for the infrastructure of Georgetown, and they disregarded what we were saying, because the streets have never been, nothing has been done to the streets since we annexed into the city. And now you're looking at bringing in four hundred units, people, cars, and the infrastructure doesn't even work. So I think you should look at the infrastructure of Georgetown, because of the water and sewer there, and the curves, and, I mean, they have rainwater, drain, rainwater runoff, and we're paying for it, and we don't even have any storm drains. So I want to find out, let's, let's fix the infrastructure before you can bring four hundred houses in.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
My name is Wood Marshall, and, and I live on that road, Blue Claw Bay Road, and I'm just like they said. All this traffic that you dumping in now, if you come up with these units, how are you, like you say, how, what are you gonna do about the outlets? And, and once somebody says something about the water, I should live there. When we have a storm, if you don't get out, you'll drown. The river come up to the top of the hill. If we had a Hurricane Five, if you, if you in Georgetown, you're good as lost. And the roads that I said, that she was saying something about there, right-of-way, those are not right-of-ways, those are people yard. Those are not even a, what y'all call it, um, easement, those are not easements. That run road is my backyard, that's my granddaddy, by granddaddy, we own both places, right next to where you talking about. My dead granddaddy gave me that to get to my yard, when we split the land. That's not a road, that's not even an easement. And easement, what you talking about was going to the, to the right, those are not easements. Those are people driveways from when they was there years ago. And the roads in Georgetown wouldn't stand the construction work that you talking about coming in there with. And furthermore, marinas and all this stuff, that shouldn't go. That's a neighborhood. Why would you want to mess up a neighborhood to make a resort? And, and like you say, you gonna use the same roads? Wouldn't work. No drainage, as the sister just got through saying, when it rain, must've worn, his yard floods. And just like she said, since we been in Georgetown, the city ain't showed us nothing, by high taxes, high water bill, high trash bill, everything far as the city said they're gonna do, never been done. Only road been paved in Georgetown is out there by the Board of Education. And the road coming in Georgetown, coming around the first curve and the second curve, no road needs to be redone. But the city say, we ain't got the money to do this, we ain't got the money to do that, but any time the city get ready to do something, they got money. But, uh, no, I would, I would hate to even see this kind of construction, but I'd rather see, if anything gonna be done, it'd be nice to have homes, not marinas and, and restaurants and all this stuff. This is a neighborhood. You know, if you're gonna do that, carry it out in the wilderness somewhere like they always do. Don't come break up a peaceful neighborhood and traffic, good lord. We have enough problem with traffic now. And then you gonna dump all this in there with one road, and that one road is a Y, no one say it's a F, because it comes out of Georgetown, down Dudley, or out of Georgetown to Seventeen, straight past the Board of Education. That's the only inlet and outlet you got. And you talking about four hundred and some apartments with people that have five and six cars? You ain't asking them what trouble, it's just too much, and that ain't gonna get it, it will not work. We have enough trouble now to bring more headache in. It's a peaceful neighborhood, and I like to see it a peaceful neighborhood, and bringing all this construction and, and whatever else you got going in, no, I would, I would hate to see it go, and I, I would like for y'all to reconsider. That's what I had to say about this.
Thank you very much, sir.
One thing I'd like to say on a related topic, a lot of the issues expressed, which I'm glad we've had so many people come out and express their concern, a lot of the issues are about the neighborhood as a whole, and I'm not sure if everyone is aware, we actually are doing a neighborhood planning program, and Georgetown is the next area, so we want, we want to be looking at this area and seeing how we can address those concerns and how we can do it. And we'll probably be towards the summer, trying to get people involved and have public meetings in exactly what you've expressed today, find out what the neighborhood needs, traffic, stormwater, any flooding, and a second access, and sort of focus on this area like we did with the country club and Sandy Run Plan last year, maybe it was the year before. But sort of identify the issues with this neighborhood as a whole, instead of just the specific parcel here, and address a lot of those concerns. It's one of, part of the city's neighborhood planning process that we're gonna be working towards in the upcoming summer, spring months.
So what you're saying, that was on, kinda like the city's agenda before this item actually came before you?
Yes, yeah, we're, we've actually been doing some work on the gateway on the Seventeen and 258 corridor, sort of the commercial component of the neighborhood plan, and then as we draw to a conclusion with that, we want to just focus on the Georgetown neighborhood as a whole, and address a lot of those concerns, such as access and traffic and the maintenance and condition of the roads, and really get the people who live there involved and find out what they need and what we can do to address those concerns.
Whether we okay this or not, you can still build apartments on that land, which is like it is, right? I mean, you still have those-
With a special use permit.
-four hundred people with that, you know, you're still gonna have, whether we decide to make it better here or later, and you can still be able to build on there, it doesn't make any difference, whether we vote for it or against it or not, you're still gonna have the ability to go and build those apartment complexes, right?
With the exception of the marina?
With the exception of the marina, yeah.
That's correct, with a special use permit, they could come forward with the same apartment proposal.
So you can still have the same amount of traffic, same amount of problems, if we do nothing tonight, it's still the same. Except for the marina.
But, go back to the other map, you know, where we're, I guess, that's good, or, yeah. Next one. That's good. The, the parcel, as I'm looking at, to the left of Blue Clay Bay Drive.
That's all part of this, that's what I was saying, the maps are a little bit misleading.
Okay, that's all part of this big, big thing. I mean, my, my, you know, I understand what Mr. Williams is saying, my, my major concern is, it's just getting people in and out of there. That's, it's, it's a problem, I mean, I've been, I haven't driven all the way back that far into it, but what I have driven back to, every day, I mean, it's, it's, it's kinda torturous driving back through there, and you get, you know, two-way traffic, and next you throw, you know, so the construction's art, truck is what it is, okay? So no matter what we do, you know, someone's gonna develop that piece of land no matter what. But the bottom line comes down, in my eyes, is somewhere along the way, the streets have gotta be improved, I mean, either widen, improve, something to put up with, with that. So whether it's RM five, whether it's, you know, the new rezoning, you know, PDR, it doesn't make any difference, it's just be able to get people in and out of there. You know, just like one gentleman said, when we have a, we have a flood, or we have hurricanes or something going on, you've gotta get people in and out, I mean, just, just downtown Jacksonville, that's a problem, you know, going down there. So, well, hopefully the city is going to address those issues, because those people out there at least deserve that, because it, it isn't, it's been overlooked for so long.
I think it'd force the city to have to do something.
Okay, so-
There's a problem there, and since I'd say limits, the city is gonna have to be forced to do something about it.
My, my biggest-
Go ahead.
My, my biggest problem is, is two or three things, or a couple of things, and one is transportation in the-
And one is transportation in this area. I'd hate to give somebody directions on how to get here. Because you've got to make too many rights, left, right, left, and it, to what, what that's saying to me is it's just not an easy place to get into and get out of. And you'll have people driving around these neighborhoods trying to find this place, who knows what. By allowing the marina to come here, we've made this area attractive, more attractive for people to buy or to rent or to come here. So the, the marina is actually going to make things a little worse in that I got a feeling without the marina, this area would not develop quite as quickly as it is, as it would now. I just, I just don't see this as, I, I don't know what to tell them to do with this, but I just don't see this as a good use of this land. I mean, I think we're asking in trouble, so...
Any further discussion? Mr. Pierce.
John Pierce, 405 Johnson Boulevard. I'd just like to make a couple of comments. The zoning may show some numbers, but in reality, I would think the maximum number of apartments would probably be somewhere around in the 300s, maybe 330. We tried to do this and set parameters to be as a maximum amount. That doesn't mean that's what's going to be in reality. And also at the same time, I talked with the Dr. Thomas Hunter and, and something that we just sent earlier on to the, to the planning and if we don't have a restaurant, I told him I thought it'd be a good idea and a great idea for the community. Him being a doctor and he does practice in emergency rooms, that if we don't have a restaurant, have something like an urgent care center there that would aid the community and it would be a, I think it would be a great asset for the area to have an urgent care center right within the area. And if we, if we put a restaurant, then there won't be an urgent care center because it wouldn't be run, but I would think that would aid and I understand Mr. Spring, what your concern is, but it is what it is and it's the only way it can be developed. And if it were developed as it is with a large number of mobile homes, I don't know that, or even apartments with not the amenities as proposed there, I don't know in the end of the day that it would really be good for the area. I think this would be a great asset for the area and I think at the end of the day, it'd be a great asset for the Georgetown community. And I think Dr. Hunter certainly wants, the folks he's dealing, he's looking with out of Texas has developed some first-class projects and that's what his desire is. He's held it a long time. He's had a chance to sell it several times over for the wrong use in his mind and he really wants to bring something positive to the Georgetown area. And I'd like to try to answer any questions. Y'all have any that I could try to answer as best I could. And by the way, I just want to correct one thing, Mr. Spring. McDaniel Drive, I built it prior to any construction. The city took that street. Because I built it myself and one of the conditions was they want to build all the schools and all the houses and after being built the road, I said, well, that's fine and well, I built it to the standards. So if you want to go with all the construction traffic, you need to take it. Because I would have had to fix just as, and there again, it is what it is, so I had to fix one road, like I've had to fix several of them, but I'm well aware, and I don't know what the, the TIA may call for some widening in some places. It may cause some improvements with where, you know, the one thing you do have when you've got roadway shoulders and it may, it may make us widen the road for that to help ease that, what we call kink or bend. So I haven't seen, but I'm sure, and it does address safety concerns as well. Thank you all.
Thank you, John. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we're going to take a vote on this. We have a motion by Ms. Moore and a second by Mr. Williams to approve the rezoning request from RM5 to PDR with the conditions that are set forth by the planning department and finding facts A through D. Did I say that all right? I believe I did. Okay, those in favor of this motion, please raise your right hand. Raise your right hand up so I can see it, please. Okay, we have three in favor. Those opposed. And we have four opposed. This motion does not pass. Yes, yes, sir. All right, the motion is presented, has not passed, and then we need another motion to have act upon this.
You ready?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, we deny the rezoning request based upon the findings of fact C being in the negative. The impact of the adjacent property owners and the surrounding community is reasonable and the benefits of the rezoning outweigh any potential inconvenience or harm to the community.
No, second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Spring and a second by Ms. Wirey to deny the rezoning requests based upon finding of fact C that it did not benefit in their favor. All right. Any discussion on that?
Yes.
It looks like to me, all we're, all we're doing is asking for a rezoning of this piece of land as opposed to the actual building. We know the, we know the intent by the rezoning, but they could choose not to do anything. They could choose to do part of it, all of it, or none of it. And the, the proposal here is to rezone the piece of, piece of property. And that's why I'm in favor of it because, in favor of the original motion, because they want to rezone the piece of property. And that's, that's what you're asking, if I understand you correctly.
Now, this is a little bit more than just a standard rezoning. I mean, they're, they're saying we want to rezone this for multifamily, a marina, and a restaurant.
Understand.
At the density that they've established as a maximum and, and the board's got to make a decision on the rezoning, but also because it is a little bit more specific than the general rezoning, is that appropriate for this location?
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to deny the rezoning request. Those in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, we have four in favor, those opposed. And three opposed. So that motion to deny this request has passed.
I think we should first read that, checking up that area and after they get that.
Okay, there is no other new business. We'll move on to reports.
One report would be that this will be forwarded to the city council for their February 5th, I believe it is, city council meeting. I'm not sure about that date, but it will be a 7:00 PM meeting here the first Tuesday after the first Monday, so I believe it's the 5th. So in case anybody on, just watching on TV or for the board members and for the residents that are here, that's when it will be forwarded to the city council for consideration and a public hearing.
Do y'all understand that, the ones who are here? Okay. It does have an opportunity still. It will go before the city council and it still has, based upon their recommendations, it still has a chance to move forward. So we're moving on up. They have, you know, so they have, there's still another chance of this, so... Okay, as long as y'all understand that and plus also viewers, and thank you for, Ryan, for bringing that to everybody's attention. Okay, Mr. Goodson? We have none. Okay. Is there any other items for, from the planning board itself?
Make a motion we adjourn the meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Keyes. Right, thank you very much. Y'all have a nice evening.
Do you want to stay?
Yeah, I thought about that.